All right, we're gonna start this meeting. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, I would appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay. Did he ask? Roll call. Yes, please.
Mayor McKay.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonski.
Here.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Awesome, thank you. Military heroes, let's see, who are we gonna have all up here? The Sikh Youth Foundation, all of you, if you wanna come up and relate to military heroes.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
As you know, we've been working very closely with our Military Heroes Foundation, and our other friends at the Sikh Temple stepped up last year and became very big donors to a very worthwhile cause, and they're back again this year to contribute. And nobody wants to hear from me, I think I'd like to turn it over to the representatives from the Sikh Temple to, so that they can explain what they're bringing forward and we can go from there.
Awesome.
Where's our little speaker?
Anybody would like to speak?
We begin and then he will speak, okay. We are happy to report that this year we were able to raise $1,200 for the military heroes, and we want to give them in the form of gift cards, so they can buy whatever they want to.
Wow, awesome.
Great. All right, so hello, members of the Town of Southwest Ranches and Town Council.
Is that mic on?
Doesn't sound like it.
Yeah, it's on, just not turned up too loud.
Hello?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can take it and hold it if you want.
Yeah, take it out.
Hello, is that okay?
That's better.
So, first off, I would like to thank all the military personnel that serves us for their tremendous sacrifices, and it's truly been our pleasure and our privilege to be able to help them. On behalf of the Sikh Youth Association, we are excited to inform you that we have once again partnered with the Town of Southwest Ranches to present our second annual Race for Unity and Diversity 5K Run and Walk on Leap Day, February 29th, 2020, at the Sikh Society of Florida located on Sterling Road. Just as last year, we want to showcase the unity and diversity in our community. In other words, we want to invite people from various walks of life, cultures, religions, et cetera, and foster a sense of community and understanding among them. We strive to promote awareness and acceptance in our neighborhoods, and encourage youth activism and community service in order to build a healthier society. The proceeds of this event will benefit the Town of Southwest Ranches College Scholarship Fund, which offers financial aid for students entering college. During our inaugural year in 2019, we attracted more than 750 attendees and raised $10,000 for the town's college scholarship fund. It was a spectacular event, complete with the pre-race circle of prayer, the town mayor's address, ethnic cuisines, and numerous cultural booths. We could not have done this without the town's support and enthusiasm, and we look forward to joining hands with the town to pull off yet another great event. With that being said, I encourage everyone to grab a flyer on their way out. The flyer contains additional details about the event. As a reminder, the race registration is now open, and there's an early bird discount for those who register prior to February 1st, 2020. Once again, thank you so much for your support in the past, and we could not be more excited for next year's race on February 29th, 2020. We look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
Awesome.
Well, good evening, and it's once again an honor and a privilege to be here. And on behalf of Coller and myself, we would like to thank Southwest Ranches for always supporting us, as without your support, it's really hard for us to do what we do. So from the bottom of my heart, I thank you so much. We want to recognize two of your board members, so Russell, if you could please come up.
(laughing).
And Susan, if you could please come up.
There you go.
And last but not least. And Billow, if you could come up too. Once again, on behalf of Military Hero Support Foundation, we sincerely appreciate all of your support for the, I don't know how many years now. Without you all, we can't do this, and we greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much.
It's always a team effort, and we greatly appreciate all you do, and all the hard work, and you coming forward and helping us and helping the community, and it does nothing but makes everybody better.
Thank you, Mayor. If we can ask the council to step down for a photo?
Sure.
Or do you want us to just stand?
Would you rather us just stand behind here?
Sure.
Are you gonna take pictures? Come on up front, Susan. Susan, get in here. Get in here, Kate. Move in. We don't have to turn sideways.
I need a little scooching in, I think.
Scooch in.
Sideways.
Yeah, turn sideways.
Because you're turning sideways and moving.
Hitch to the middle.
There you go.
Okay, let's take a few shots here. Are we ready?
Yes.
One, two, three.
Suzie, we're not done.
Show your plaque, Suzie. There you go.
Awesome.
Many blessings.
Thank you.
Oh, I would've sat down.
So I told you, didn't want that happening.
Is this a badge?
No, no, I moved it for the picture.
Gift cards.
Gladly, gladly, pleasure.
Thanks for all your help.
All right. So we want to move on to Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. So Carla Barrow, Woman in Distress, is here, so step on up.
Thank you, thank you all, Mayor, to the county, to, or councilmembers, rather, to all the distinguished people that are here on behalf of our Board of Trustees, on behalf of the staff, including the clinicians, the advocates, those that are out there working on empowerment, really, we want to thank you. This is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and it's the month of October 2019. Whereas the residents of Southwest Ranches are this town's most precious resource in ensuring their safety, well-being, and positive development, is a priority and responsibility that we all share. And whereas one in three women and one in four men have been victims of physical violence by an intimate partner within their lifetime, and whereas the exposure of young children to such violence is occurring at an alarming rate, the U.S. Advisory Board on Child Abuse and Neglect suggests that domestic violence may be the single major precursor to child abuse and fatalities in this country. And whereas domestic violence may be the single major precursor to child abuse and fatalities, whereas by providing individuals with education about healthy relationships and by changing attitudes that support violence, we work to stop domestic violence for Southwest Ranches residents. Now therefore, the Mayor and Town Council do hereby proclaim the month of October 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the Town of Southwest Ranches, and urge all residents to respond to and work toward ending domestic violence by supporting their community's efforts to empower and assist victims in finding and accessing the resources they need, and by promoting awareness and prevention of domestic violence in our community. Dated this 24th day of October 2019, Doug McKay, Mayor.
Awesome, okay, if we could all step down, and I got a proclamation to give, or get a picture? Appreciate it.
One of you over here. Two and two.
Congratulations.
Mike, so we can hear.
So I thought bike school was the best. Congratulations.
Mayor, next on the agenda is Sandy to give an update on the 20th birthday party. Awesome. Sandy, you're onstage here.
I am. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, and town administrator. I'm happy to report that the plan for the 20th anniversary of the town has made significant progress in the last two months. This has been accomplished through the efforts of a dynamic committee of residents representing all areas of the town, our police department, volunteer fire department, our friends in the Sikh Society of Florida, and councilmember Schroeder. I would like to make a special thank you to Susan Cuts, who is my right hand and keeps me from going insane. The theme is the 20th birthday party, and will include a morning parade followed by barbecue at Rolling Oaks Barn, and will feature Sucker Punch, a country rock band who played and received praise at the 15th birthday party five years ago. The event date will be on Saturday, April 4th. The parade will begin about 10:00 a.m., and the party at the barn will begin at 11:00 a.m. and run through 3:00 p.m. We are expecting about 600 to 800 residents to attend. We have tentatively selected an event planning company who will provide all the labor, the equipment, the food, games, including tents, stage, tables, and chairs. Davy PD will have a host of static displays and demonstrations, and there will be activities for both children and adults. Lastly, we have a sponsorship committee to assist with securing additional funds, to assist with some of the cost, and we will welcome any dollar amount. Anyone who is interested, please call Susan and myself, and we will give you the information as we start to plan further. If council is amiable to these plans, we will continue securing the necessary vendors and make this a very memorable event for our residents. And lastly, we will keep you posted as we have more information.
Okay. Any of us up here have any questions first? Sandy? Any of us have any questions related to the birthday party? No? Okay. Just keep us in the loop, greatly appreciated, thanks for all the hard work.
Good job, Sandy. Susan?
Mayor, next is public comment. We have two speakers in, of this order, David Kazinsky followed by Steve Bright Cruz. David?
Good evening, council. David Kazinsky, 6411 Holliday Trail, speaking first on behalf of the Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association. Next Wednesday night, we're gonna have the speaker we were supposed to have last month, Les Corteguera. We had a scheduling conflict, he couldn't make it, and we ended up having a speaker from the Broward County Property Appraiser's Office show up. He did a great job, but Les is gonna be up there next Wednesday night. He's one of the investigators with the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission. He's gonna talk about captive wildlife issues, including initial inspections, mandatory routines, investigations, complaints, injuries, bites, escapes, among other things. All are welcome to attend. It should be very interesting. And to add to Sandy's comments about the birthday party, myself and Robert Sorota are on the sponsorship committee. We're waiting for the fundraising levels forms to be approved, and then we're going to go forward making the calls to get fundraising done. We got the fundraising levels for $2,500, $1,000, and $500, and then there, I guess there's a contribution level, I think we called that the pony level or something like that? I don't remember. Something like that. A lot of people are contacting me, they're very interested in sponsoring this, so we should do some really strong fundraising. And thank Robert for a lot of his work in coming up with the breakdown of what each category will come up with, and the final fundraising list will provide more detail. Thanks, have a great night.
Thank you.
Steve Bright Cruz, final speaker.
Steve Bright Cruz, President, Country Estates. Just a couple of items. One, I wanted to give a shout out and thanks to the Parks Board and the Rural Arts Board that got together to discuss the entranceway into the Country Estates Fishing Hole Park. It was a great discussion, look forward to seeing that continue to progress, but we appreciate them putting in the time and discussing that item, so that was great. The second thing I wanted to do was follow up on an item that I had brought up a couple of months ago, and I have not heard anything back on it, and the window is kind of closing on it, so I'm not sure if anything's been done or whatever, but it needs to be done. And that is, the traffic that is out west that's been generated by the school out there is significantly, I'm sure enrollment is increasing out there, and the traffic is also increasing. It's significantly higher than it was a year ago, and it is really affecting the traffic patterns out there. As you may recall, way back when, that the traffic study was done for that school, Pembroke Pines was behind it, but Broward County actually did it. It was, you know, within a hair's breadth of them having to widen the road. Clearly, now, I feel if another traffic study were to be done, it would be well over the top, and they would need to widen the road, which may be just what we're looking for and have been waiting for and need to see to finally move that project up in the priority list. So I have not heard any update on that, whether that traffic study has been ordered yet or not. It needs to be ordered, and it needs to be, you know, done at a time when school is fully in session, so appreciate the follow up on that. Thank you. If there's any update on that, I would appreciate some feedback. Thank you.
Okay. Board reports. Do we have any board reports today?
We did have a combination meeting of the Parks Board and the Arts Board, and we resolved some of the problems, and so right now, we're going to advertise and possibly have anybody that's interested in doing the design for the entranceway meet here, and both boards will be here, and we'll discuss it, we'll show them the designs on two of the parks, give them an idea, and then turn them loose and see how creative our residents are. That's pretty much it. We didn't have our meeting because we didn't have a quorum, so we had a quorum with the Arts Board, so we were able to meet and get that resolved, and now we're just moving forward with it. So hopefully, we'll have a lot of entries of people that want to participate in this. We haven't got the money for it, but we have to get the design first, that's the first step, and then we'll work on the rest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Bright Cruz, Chairman of the Comp Board. I just wanted to give a quick update. You all had tasked us to take a look at the land use options out on US 27 for that corridor there that is open for some commercial development. We have done that, we have completed that, and we voted to send it back to you all for your consideration, so I just wanted to report that that task has been completed. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional board reports? Seeing none? That's closed. Councilmember comments?
I'll go.
Go ahead, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Just a few announcements and a couple comments I have right now. Just the announcements first, just so everybody knows, Halloween's coming up, that's usually a big deal here in our town. We have Halloween at the barn, it's coming Saturday from 6:00 to 9:00. Meet your neighbors, bring your candy, bring a table, bring some lights, bring an adult beverage, whatever, you know, float your boat. You know, we have a great time at there, we have kids' arts and crafts inside the barn, we have the haunted barn. We have a lot going on, and the town, not the town, the residents in Rolling Oaks and out west have been working like for the last several days on the barn, so it's gonna be quite spectacular, everybody has a lot of fun with it, so come by this Saturday. November 16th, we've got At the Barn also, a car show for the Parks Board, and you get to see some really nice antique cars, there's, I think there's like hundreds of them that are there. And we also have combining that, the Parks Board is combining that with the Chili Cook-Off, so that should be a fairly interesting combination that's going to come up. So I urge everybody to come to that, it's on November 16th, it's Saturday. We have our second annual holiday decorating homes contest coming up. It's, excuse me, I have to fly her, it's, the entry form is due by Monday, December the 2nd. Judging will begin on the 9th of December, and the awards for the top three homes, did I get that right, top three? Yes, okay. Top three homes will be given out on the 12th, and you get some really good bragging rights throughout the rest of the year, and it's a lot of fun, so I urge, you know, the home decorators to ramp it up and enter the contest, okay? Let's see, November 3rd, just an FYI, daylight savings time begins, set your clocks back an hour, no, I didn't cause it, it's been around for a while. We have the Flowmobile on the 21st here at Town Hall from 10:00 to 2:00. We're going to be honoring our veterans with a cookout on the 8th, Andy, can you add to that when it gets to councilman comments, I mean administrative comments? Town Hall's gonna be closed on Veterans Day, which is Monday, the 11th. We have Broward County Property Appraiser on the 18th here at Town Hall, if you have any property appraiser questions, from 10:00 to 12:00. January 3rd coming up, we have the Mr. and Mrs. Southwest Ranches, which benefits the Education Advisory Fund, the Scholarship Fund, and as mentioned earlier, we also have the Leap Day 5K coming up with the Sikh Society, that benefits the Scholarship Fund, that's gonna be on February 29th. Last thing I want to mention here is, we have a memorial for councilman and vice mayor Freddie Fitz Kelly the 26th at 2:00 p.m. at St. Mark's, the family is putting that on, when I said "we," meaning the town. If you can attend, that would be fantastic. I just want to make mention, too, that we have applications and letters have gone out for the District 3 appointment process, they need to be in by November 4th, and we have a special meeting on the 14th for selection of, to fill Councilman Fitz Kelly's district, so I just want to make mention, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Dee, Bob?
I'm good.
You're up. Dee?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay.
I just wanted to bring something up to the...
Mic, so we can hear.
So I think you guys all got the same note, it went to, I believe, from Sarah Lipman, it went to all of us. Folks, we get a lot of email, so it's really tough, I get more email through the town than I get at work, and I get a lot at work, so it's tough to stay on top of it, but anytime I see something coming in for a resident, those are the first ones I read, then I go to Andy, then I go to Keith. But this person sent us a note, and I'm gonna read it, most of it verbatim, because I think it's important based on the discussion we had at our last council meeting. When I initially learned of the vacancy in District 3, I wondered how it would be filled. After receiving the district-wide letter, my neighbor sent it to me joking that they were nominating me. Don't worry, I'm not applying. I highly commend you on opening up the process, as awareness of our town council is undoubtedly the first step towards community engagement. As a concerned citizen, and this is what I wanted to highlight, I ask that you look beyond those you know, and she watched, she must have watched the 10-10 council meeting video. Look for genuine concern, dedication to our community, looking for, look for somebody willing to listen, think critically, and make thoughtful decisions. Look for somebody not on a side, but one who recognizes that the issues are complex, and the right decision all too often means pleasing no one. You never know who's out there that you just haven't met yet. Please give everybody a chance, and I think that's wise for all of us to listen to, because we'll probably know most of the people that submitted an application, but how many of us, how many people in the room knew Jeff Nelson when he first came to a meeting? Okay, Dee, one of us. You know a lot of people, you've said that. How many of us knew Jeff before he came to his first couple of meetings? I didn't know him when he called me and said, "Explain John Canada's budget." He ran successfully and was a council member and a two-term mayor, so you never know who's out there, and I completely agree with this resident, so.
Yeah, let me, if I could add, jump in and add to that, Bob? You know, since the last meeting, we talked about that, and we talked about the process, and, you know, one of the, one of the things that occurred to me, we, you know, I always give the expression, five ships sailing in the same direction, well, right now, we're four ships. I really think this is a process where it's not required, but we all four should be on the same page with who we select, and I think if we can't get to that point, I think we need to go, leave it to the voters with a March election.
I agree 100%. If it isn't unanimous...
If one of us object to an individual, I think we should put the brakes on the whole process and go to that.
Absolutely. Let's just go for an election come March and...
Yeah, I mean, I think we all need to be, because the animosities or the playing of games, you know, I don't want to see that, you know, you know, something like that. So I think it behooves us to be unified in our selection, and I'm just throwing that out there, it's not a legal requirement, as I understand it.
No, I...
It's just something I've thought about in the last couple of weeks.
Me too. I thought if we weren't, we weren't all on the same board, this is a pretty good position, and you just don't put people on for...
Education Advisory Fund, the scholarship fund. And as mentioned earlier, we also have the Leap Day 5K coming up with the Seek Society that benefits the scholarship fund. That's going to be on February 29th. Last thing I want to mention here is we have a memorial for councilman and vice mayor Freddie Fitz Kelly the 26th at 2:00 PM at St. Mark's. The family is putting that on. When I said "we," meaning the town. If you can attend, that would be fantastic. I just want to make mention, too, that we have applications and letters have gone out for the District 3 appointment process. They need to be in by November 4th, and we have a special meeting on the 14th for selection to fill Councilman Fitz Kelly's district. So, I just want to make mention, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Dee, Bob?
I'm good.
You're up.
I'm good.
You're good? Okay.
I just wanted to bring something up there.
Mike, so we can hear.
So, I think you guys all got the same note. It went to, I believe, from Sarah Lipman. It went to all of us. Folks, we get a lot of email, so it's really tough. I get more email through the town than I get at work, and I get a lot at work. So, it's tough to stay on top of it, but anytime I see something come in for a resident, those are the first ones I read. Then I go to Andy, then I go to Keith. But this person sent us a note, and I'm going to read it, most of it verbatim, because I think it's important based on the discussion we had at our last council meeting. When I initially learned of the vacancy in District 3, I wondered how it would be filled. After receiving the district-wide letter, my neighbor sent it to me joking that they were nominating me. Don't worry, I'm not applying. I highly commend you on opening up the process as awareness of our town council is undoubtedly the first step towards community engagement. As a concerned citizen, and this is what I wanted to highlight, I ask that you look beyond those you know. And she must have watched the 10-10 council meeting video. Look for genuine concern, dedication to our community, looking for, look for somebody willing to listen, think critically, and make thoughtful decisions. Look for somebody not on a side, but one who recognizes that the issues are complex, and the right decision all too often means pleasing no one. You never know who's out there that you just haven't met yet. Please give everybody a chance. And I think that's wise for all of us to listen to, because we'll probably know most of the people that submitted an application. But how many of us, how many people in the room knew Jeff Nelson when he first came to a meeting? Okay, Dee, one of us. You know a lot of people, you've said that. How many of us knew Jeff before he came to his first couple of meetings? I didn't know him when he called me and said, "Explain John Canada's budget." He ran successfully and was a council member and a two-term mayor, so you never know who's out there, and I completely agree with this resident, so.
Yeah, let me, if I could add, jump in and add to that, Bob. You know, since the last meeting, we talked about that, and we talked about the process. You know, one of the things that occurred to me, we, you know, I always give the expression five ships sailing in the same direction, well, right now, we're four ships. I really think this is a process where it's not required, but we all four should be on the same page with who we select. And I think if we can't get to that point, I think we need to go, leave it to the voters with a March election.
I agree 100%. If it isn't unanimous...
If one of us object to an individual, I think we should put the brakes on the whole process and go to that.
Absolutely. Let's just go for an election come March and...
Yeah, I mean, I think we all need to be, because the animosities or the playing of games, you know, I don't want to see that, you know, something like that. So, I think it behooves us to be unified in our selection. And I'm just throwing that out there, it's not a legal requirement, as I understand it. It's just something I've thought about in the last couple of weeks.
Me, too. I thought if we weren't, we weren't all on the same board. This is a pretty good position, and you just don't put people on for, because they're going to vote the way you want, or they're going to do what you want them to do. That's not the way to do it, you know? You should have some involvement, I would think, in the town so that you show interest. But I think if we're not unanimous, I think the best thing to do is get a hold of Broward County Supervisors, and let's get it set up and have an election in March.
And let the voters choose.
So, then, should we keep this informal, or should we formalize it? Russell, get your pencil ready. Should we formalize this as a motion and something we vote on?
I think I would keep it informal.
I don't think we can, because it's a charter question.
Yeah.
What does that have to do? I'm not clear on what that means, Gary.
Well, let's turn around and ask Keith.
Yeah, you can leave this informal, but the good news from what the statement is in speaking with Russell, if you all wait till, if you're unable to find that one that you all can support, by piggybacking on to the election in March, which is basically the Democratic primary in Broward County, the cost will drop significantly. So, in fact, I was asking Russell, if we were quoted between 10,000 and 12,000 for our own election, it would be roughly half.
Half of it, yep.
Good. I totally endorse that. I was going to try to bring something up like that as well.
Yeah, I mean, we may find the one, I mean, that we all can agree.
Right, so what we want to do is we want...
Say, in a backup plan.
Yeah, 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 just so I have an understanding here. We're going to move forward with whatever applicants we get, and if we can get all four of us to agree on one, we're there. And if we don't, what we're saying is we're going to push it to the March election.
Correct.
Is that accurate?
Well, that's my thoughts, yeah.
I agree.
I agree.
Looks like we have, oh, Doug, you haven't checked in. Do you agree?
Yeah, listen, I'm good with that. I mean, whatever we're going to do.
So, we have a consensus.
It's really only 90 days by the time it would occur, anyway. Because it wouldn't be...
But if you're an applicant waiting, it's 90 long days.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If you have somebody that needs the five votes up here for a project or something they're doing, that's a long time.
Yeah, there's a couple of months in there with only one meeting as well, so, yeah, time will fly, but I think that's a great approach.
I just think the transparency and the unification that we need to have up here on the dais with, you know, who we select, or we let the voters select it for us, you know? I think that's really important, that we make that step.
Good.
That, my two cents.
Okay.
I didn't have any more comments other than the note that I wanted to read. Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, 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 yes. Thank you for poking me in the shoulder, Andy, just to remind me. Steve, the traffic study that you had requested, you had mentioned, the town's got to jump on that. We actually expect it to be completed by the end of this month. Now, we're running out of month fast, but we should see some movement on this pretty soon, and, you know, I think it takes them roughly a month to turn it back to us. So, I think relief is on the way. I hope relief is on the way. I feel the same way. I mean, it's crazy when I pull out in the morning, and there's certain times of the day where I feel like I'm living in, you know, Pembroke Pines on Pines Boulevard, for God's sake, so. You're welcome, thank you.
Okay. You're done, Bob?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So, one of the things I just want to add to about Freddie Services, so they're, this Saturday at St. Mark's Church at 2:00 PM on Flamingo Road. It's 5601 South Flamingo Road, Southwest Ranches. And following that, there'll be a reception immediately following in the parish center. So, anybody that's interested or attending, that's the information. So, then after that, it's the Halloween event out at the barn from 6 to 9. So, all right, I'm good. Legal comments?
Sure, Mayor, I'll be brief. You know, the town gets sued often, and generally, we say, "Wait in line."
An exception.
Generally, lawsuits today last five to 10 years, so it's a pretty lengthy process. Out of all the cases I got, the one this week was the most fun, so I'll just tell you about this one. This is a plaintiff versus Doug McKay in his official capacity, you know, Doug McKay, and the Chief of Police of Davy Del Angle, okay? What this complaint is, is that a new resident wants to move into the town of Southwest Ranches who's a sexual offender on the registry list. They came to the town and they asked the town to advise where children congregate in the town, because they're not allowed to live within so many feet of where the children congregate. They then asked us to tell them where all the bus routes are in the town. Well, I can tell you that there was no one in the town who's going to tell them where children congregate in the town. Similarly, they went to Davy, and they asked Davy PD the exact same question. Where do kids congregate in the town? Where can I live? Where can I not live in Southwest Ranches? And Davy said, as we did, "We're not answering that question. That's not for us to answer. You're the sexual offender, you know? You need to figure that out on your own." So, they didn't like our answer, which is, "We're not telling you, that's your job." So, they sued Doug directly and the Chief of Police directly in what we call a writ mandamus, which is telling the court, "You court forced the town to tell us where children live, so we can stay 1,000 feet away," you know? So, I just wanted to mention how this works and how crazy it is. This is one of several we got this week, but this one was the most interesting, so no further legal, Mayor.
Okay. Andy Byrne?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Actually, I have several things for you this evening. First off, I did want to talk about the Veterans Day observance that the town is going to do on Friday, November 8th. We're inviting all the veterans to come in and join us for lunch. We're going to do a barbecue. We'll have the pledge to the flag, we'll have the anthem, we'll have some other things, but we're going to have a barbecue lunch and just have a, just an opportunity to have them come over here, have lunch, and to allow the staff and the council and anybody else who'd like to, to just say thank you for your service. So, we'll be doing that on November 8th. Another item I wanted to share with you is the town received an AFG grant for firefighting for $10,611. It has a town match of 558 for a combined total of $11,170. We're going to spend that $11,000 on two different things. Both are within my authority as the administrator, but combined is over, so I just wanted to share this with you. If you guys want more information, I'd be more than happy to give it to you. But we're committing $5,550 to driver training, and then with another vendor, officer training for Officer 1 and 2 for $5,600. So, it's combined a little over $11,000. So, if council wants more detail on that, I'd be happy to give it to you. But it's over my authority, but it's split over two different vendors, so I just wanted to make you guys aware of that. Next, I do have a FEMA update. Marty Wizard that he is has put together a brand-new spreadsheet that has very small text, so I had to go through it and make my notes, so I could share it with you. So, going back to Hurricane Irma, the total cost that the town incurred was a little over $4.5 million. We're eligible for reimbursement on almost that full amount. I have the exact dollar amounts. The Southwest Ranches costs are out-of-pocket for the collections on Irma. Of that $4.5 million is $223,616. So far to date, and you marvel at the federal government and FEMA, so we're two years later, of that $4.5 million that we're eligible for reimbursement, so far, we've received a little over $1.9 million, so we're under half. We are expecting the rest of it. It's all been committed, and it's in process. We do expect another $900,000 in the next few days, so we're continuing to make progress on that. We do have $1.8 million currently outstanding on our line of credit, so we're working towards paying that down as those payments come in. But I'd be happy to give you certainly more detailed information or share Marty's spreadsheet with you. But our paperwork is in, it's all been approved, and now it's just a question of we're in the queue and we're waiting to get paid. There's nothing else for us to do. I want to thank, you know, Marty and the finance staff and Sandy working with them, Russell cooperating with them as well, to have the town as well-positioned as we are. At this point, it's, we're sitting back and waiting, there's nothing else we can do, but we're trying to stay on top of it and bring it in as quickly as we can. As far as Councilmember Fitz Kelly, I just want to let you all know that we've ordered a bench for the front of Town Hall that matches the other benches, so that is, that's on order. And we're working on a plaque that we can put out at Country Estates Park, and as soon as I have the proof on that finalized, before we order the plaque, when I have that proof finalized, I will share it with all of you, just to make sure that you're okay with that. One other item that we're adding under approval of minutes tonight, we have the August 22nd meeting, and then Russell put up the minutes from the September 26th meeting, so when we get to that item on the agenda, we'll ask for a motion to add that item to it. And last but not least, I just want to touch on briefly on the next item on tonight's agenda. And I want to thank you all for your consideration. I've worked here in the town under contract for about seven and a half years. I came in here originally on a five-year contract, it's been extended twice. I had reached a point where I was coming into my lame duck year at the end of my contract. I had some concerns on where things might go, and the fact that the council is willing to consider extending my contract out means a great deal to me for my security going forward, for my family, and I just, before the item comes up, since it's next on the agenda and I had the floor right now, I just wanted to thank you again for that consideration. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. All right. Number 11, if you'd read it, Russell?
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, mending resolution numbers 2012-052, 2014-023, 2015-021, 2016-023, and 2018-040, approving the fifth modification to the agreement between the Town of Southwest Ranches and Andrew Burns for the position of Town Administrator, authorizing the mayor and town attorney to enter into the agreement and providing an effective date.
Andy, you want to discuss this, or?
Want to get a motion in a second, first?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Sure, Mayor, if I may, I'll give a little bit of background history on this. So, many of you know, when Andy came to us, although he was in the municipal field, newly in the municipal field in Tamarack, helping them with certain special events and special projects, however they wanted to refer to it there, he was new as related to straight-out town administrator, municipal administration. As a result, when it was between him and Brad Kane, I knew that if you guys selected one of them, that I'd have a field day with their contract, because they basically had to get what they were given, because it was their first job truly ever in the top spot of a municipality. So, we were very lucky to severely take advantage of Andy for a lot of years while we groomed him into a stellar administrator. The problem with that, though, is once you become a stellar administrator and your rookie contract ends, then comes the reality that you have to play a little bit of catch-up and start paying your free agent a little bit more. And truly, that's what happened. So, we upped Andy's contract to an amount that made him agree to stay, not made, but enabled him to stay, because it was a fair salary, but it still was not a great salary as it relates to comparables in Broward County. As Andy comes to the end of his last contract renewal, he came with the reality that he turned a milestone age, and that there's only so many years that anyone can continue doing a stressed job of this nature. And as a result, he began, and Andy, please correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, began to just look at other opportunities as his tenure contractually with Southwest Ranches came to an end. Of the opportunities that presented himself, there were a few. There were a few that Andy opted not to look at for numerous reasons, but one that he did look at closely was Parkland, who has been on the street for one of the longest procurements I've ever seen for a city manager. What came with Parkland were two things. They had a nice benefits package, but they also offered a salary over $200,000. I think it was like $210,000, if I remember correctly, or 200,000. It might have been 200 on the nose, and plus benefits was more. As a result, Andy did not make it a secret. He told the council that he did apply for the position in Parkland, to which he became quickly a finalist for that position. After speaking with people in Parkland, I truly believed that it was his to take if he wanted it. Andy and I met, after speaking with several of the council members, Andy and I met, and I said, "Do we really want to start over?" You know, in direction and otherwise with the council. And I spoke to Andy, and I said, "Just, you know, lay it on the line, tell me, you know, what you want to do, because the town doesn't want to be in a position where we don't know what our administrator is doing, because that puts us in a horrible position." So, Andy took some time and got back to me and said, "The benefits of Parkland were twofold. One, it was a significant pay increase for the next five years of his work, and two was proximity to his home." I told Andy that if I could pick up the town and move it closer to his home, I'd be happy to, but given that not a reality, the location is not something we can change, but that I would be happy to explore with the council whether or not a salary increase and a contract extension was in the cards. After speaking with several of the council members, probably all of them, you know, and speaking to Andy, I said, "Based upon our size and looking at Parkland's size and others in the industry, you know, a $20,000 increase over a five-year contract is not unreasonable. But if you get that $20,000 increase, what commitment are you willing to make to the town?" And Andy said, "Well, if the town were, had the trust and wanted to keep me, I would agree that I would give you a five-year contract," which was actually even longer than I anticipated, "but a five-year contract, of course, you could terminate at any time, but a five-year contract, and in the event that Andy leaves, within the first three years of that contract, he would agree to refund to the town in that particular year a prorated amount of the $20,000 increase. He'd refund up to $10,000 of that to the town if we had made that expenditure." So, given that discussion, I came back to the council and drafted it up. Andy apparently thinks that you're going to approve this, because I heard through the grapevine that he's already withdrawn, drawn his name from consideration of Parkland. So, if you want to have a lot of fun tonight, you cannot approve this, and we can go from there. But that being said, you know, it truly is an honor and privilege to see Andy being here, probably the longest town administrator we've ever had, and having that continuity of Andy, Russell, Marty, and all the staff is such a bonus for any municipality. I'm in cities every single day, and the continuity is the key, because the minute you start breaking up that continuity, you don't know what to expect on any side of the table, and it makes it very difficult for a municipality to succeed. And I think one reason we're able to succeed is having the person at the helm be here for several years. So, it's an honor to have Andy agree with terms that I think are fair. The repayment is a significant detriment to him, should he choose to leave, and of course, that's in his own accord. If you all choose to terminate at any time, he keeps the money. But other than that, it's here for your consideration.
I got to join in on a little bit of that. So, Andy and I have had a few discussions along the way here, and I said, "I can't do anything." I said, "You know, you made a deal with your wife about moving to Boynton Beach or whatever," and I said, "But, you know, isn't time to trade that back and move closer again?" He said, "Not unless I want to get divorced." I said, "Well, I don't want that to happen to you." So, I said, "You know, they got a new thing they're building. They got something called a two-passenger drone." I said, "I don't think I can get the town to foot the bill. They're about a quarter of a million bucks." But it would sure make going back and forth to home a lot of fun. I said, "If the council could use it once in a while, it might really fly." But anyhow, so I threw that out there, knowing that would never fly, but I had to make fun with it and have fun with it. I said, "So, I was like Keith. We can't do anything about where you live, but the ride would be fun back and forth." So, anyhow, go ahead, Bob. So anyhow, go ahead, Bob.
First one's more of a fun question. He and I are roughly the same age, so that milestone is actually 66 and a half.
You hear that, Andy?
We haven't signed this yet. Can you get him for another year and a half for another grand?
He's next year.
You're a good negotiator. So yeah, that's the kidding stuff. But I have, it's, you know, I've only been on the council for just less than a year, but I've been working with Andy for the whole time he's been here. I remember meeting him when they had the meet and greet when he first came here, and I thought, "Smart guy, would love to have him stay around." I figured out a couple of weeks ago, he is here 11 times longer than our shortest town administrator. That doesn't say a lot about the first guy, but it says a lot about Andy. He's done a great job over the time. Keith, in terms of the contract, I do have a question for you. I know that there's some transition time built into the contract, so I guess notice is essentially what it is. Is that within his last three months of the contract, or is that three months after? How did you? I'm not clear on it from what I read here.
I'm not clear on the question. I apologize.
So there's a clause that basically says he needs to give us notice. I think it was three months, if I'm right, twelve weeks?
Ninety days, yeah.
Ninety days. And I'm assuming that that's, if he decides to stay through the end, that would be the last 90 days of his contract. Do we have an option to push that out a little bit if it's more flexible for the town?
The 90 days is really if he chooses to leave early.
Oh, so we're not going to see that?
Right, because if you, if he, if the contract came towards the end of the five-year, you'd be working way before then to either an extension or find a transition.
Good.
So that was made really only for that scenario.
Any other golden handcuffs we can put on him? It's not a great job.
What that did, what you mentioned about the 66 and whatever difference, you know, we can address that in probably three years from now and say, "Hey, can't we?"
Good. I like that strategy. Good. I'm glad you're going to stay with us. I had nightmares about you going to Parkland, so.
All right. Any public, you want to jump in? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to jump in real fast, as long as we're making some comments. I really feel that we have the best administrator in the state of Florida, bar none, and he's worth every penny of our time and our tax dollars. And he repays that tenfold in his decision-making and his capabilities. And I just want the public to know that, that is really, really important. Thank you.
Agreed. All right. Any public comment on this matter?
I think Dee wants to make.
Oh, Dee, sorry, dear. Apologize.
I just feel like if I don't say something, I'm going to look like I have mud on my face up here. But Andy knows I don't have to say too much, right? He knows where he stands, and it's been a pleasure, and I'm looking forward to six more years, did you say? Okay. Thank you.
Doug, if I could just throw one other comment out?
Go ahead.
You know, there's another indicator. I mean, we all have a good relationship with Andy, which is, to me, the most important part. But there's another aspect of Andy that doesn't always, isn't always recognized. We have very low turnover in this town. And to me, he's built an excellent team. Everybody knows their place. Everybody gets their job done. We, I've lived in cities once upon a time that every couple of years, everybody was gone, either in handcuffs or they hated the place. And I mean, we have lower than what I would, I wish my own team had as low a turnover as we have in the town staff, so I wanted to recognize that. Thank you.
All right. Public comment, go ahead.
Noel Holliesworth, 199th Avenue.
In the mic, we can't hear you real good. Sorry.
I thought I was in the mic.
There you go.
Noel Holliesworth, 199th Avenue. It's good to have Andy staying on. I spoke to him a while back about this. And the very reason that I want him to stay is, we haven't removed all of his hair yet. We still have a ways to go. We have Keith, who was born and raised here. He knows who we are, so his hair is receding somewhat, but not fast. Now Russell and Marty, we got them, you know, and they're losing it fast now, both of them. But Andy, he takes the most abuse, and what we haven't pulled out, he has pulled out on his own, and he still has some left. I think we do have the five years worth of them. So anyway, we would like to work on that. We shall continue to work on that and continue to work with you, sir. Thank you.
See what you have to look forward to, Rod? Bald head.
David Kozenski, 6411 Holliday Trail. I find, speak in favor of Andy quite a bit. He's always been accessible to me. I really appreciate that. He's always been honest with me. I appreciate that. His team is very well-organized. I think it's a very great asset for the town. I believe that Andy is the very definition of a professional, public administrator. I support him, and I look forward to having him around. Thank you.
We don't care, Kay. Thanks, sweetie.
In the mic.
I am in, I have a very loud voice.
I know.
Since the beginning, Andy, you never disappointed me. And we have been through the real drugers, down in the mud. So when they told me that you might leave, I had packed my bags, hooked up my horse trailer, threw the sheep and the cows in, and was heading north, not to Parkland. Don't like Parkland, but going north. I just, to be honest with you, I don't think I could live through another dartboard of maybe five or six possible town administrators coming in here. I'm old. I'm tired. So five or six years is okay. I'm 82. I'll be senile by the time you leave. Thank you.
Steve Rykruze, 5120 Southwest 195th Terrace. I just wanted to also just weigh my support there. Andy, you had the distinct privilege of working beside you for many years, and I had the distinct, not-so-much privilege of working with some of your predecessors. So truly, you've done an amazing job, not only in the way you've done it, but in the staff you've built, the staff you've retained, the team effort that you've put together to, I would challenge anybody in Broward County to stack up the accomplishments, what they've done over the last six or seven years versus what this town has accomplished through your leadership and the leadership of the council. So I was thrilled to hear that this was the action coming before you, and thank you for going that way. I did want to make one other comment along the same lines. That is, that I, we had this debate a few times when I was on the council, and that is, I think this, one of the lessons we can learn from this is that we're not just competing against small towns for the skills that are on our staff. We're competing against everybody in Broward County and beyond. So when we look at salary levels and compensation packages and things like that for our staff, we need to look at, regardless of the size of the town and the community, because that's who we're competing against, as this is a great example of it. So thank you.
Any additional public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. I just want to say, it's a pleasure and honor to be working with you, Andy. I've enjoyed it. We bump heads once in a while, but we tell the truth to each other, and we're out there, and we get through it or buy it or round it. And so I appreciate it, and I thank you. And you've put together a great team, and we all realize and acknowledge that and know that, and we're a very well-oiled machine running because of you. So I thank you.
In all our meetings, we're going to have lunch, and you get to buy.
So much for the pay increase.
All right. Any additional comments up here?
Yeah, just one quick one. Keith, thanks for handling this and coming to amicable terms for all the parties. I know that's not an easy task.
Thank you. I just want to mention, and hopefully Andy doesn't hear this, but you kind of were paying Chris Russo much more.
We know.
You know, so.
Who negotiated that deal?
That was my predecessor.
We won't go there.
All right. Call the question, please.
Marty wants me to mention that he didn't have an opportunity to review Andy's resume yet. He needs to add in some budgetary language, and he'll do it after the fact, as long as no one objects.
I object.
Where the funds are coming from.
I object.
Okay.
So what do we do? We'll vote on it next month?
You're voting on it, just after, Marty has to put in, no.
Marty's got to find out how to juggle it.
He just has to put in one clause in the resume saying, "The funds will be taken from general fund number such-and-such."
Got it.
And move to this line. So it's just, right, Marty?
Simple budgetary departmental transfer. Contingency non-departmental to executive to cover funding for the current year. That's all I need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that legal? Is that legal?
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes. It's a pleasure.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm really overwhelmed, but I want to thank the council certainly for the support, the working relationship that we have, Keith's efforts on this and working with him. Between Keith and the rest of the staff, they've kept me out of a lot of trouble that I might have gotten into on my own. When I weighed, you know, staying here versus going to Parkland, I looked at this council, I looked at these residents, I looked at this staff, and I see some of the finest people I've ever known. And I just, I just couldn't see how I could leave that, quite honestly. I didn't want to tell you that before, because Keith would have tried to get me for less money. But it was, you know, this town has become a part of me. These people are a part of me. And to be able to stay here and to be acknowledged like that, I am hugely, hugely appreciative, and I thank you.
I hope you say that at the end of this contract.
Some days, yes, some days not.
We're going to modify it in three years, remember?
And here's the good news. The Parkland interviews are at nine o'clock tomorrow morning. I'm delighted that I won't be there.
All right. What do we got next, there? Yeah, we did number 12, I thought, but, okay, candidate financial reporting system. What is that?
It's my item, Mayor. Just wanted to make you all aware that we are going to be moving to a electronic reporting system for the candidate reports. This is kind of following the lead of Broward County. If you're not aware, Broward County only allows candidates to file financial reports electronically, and there's a move among all of the cities in Broward County to do the same. We've entered into an agreement with virtual, virtual systems for the candidate financial reporting software. We're going to be moving in the same direction, so starting with the reports that would be due in January, we'll be doing the same thing. We'll have electronic reporting. The benefit to the candidates, to those of you who have campaign reports right now that are due, is that you'll be able to submit those electronically. They won't have to be turned into our office. The other benefit is that you'll be able to submit them as late as midnight, so you won't have the constraints of submitting them at five o'clock.
So automatically timed dates there.
Correct. Correct. And it'll also interface with our website so that they'll be posted online as soon as we get them, as opposed to waiting for me to get to it, which some.
I was going to say, it takes some responsibility off you. I bet you love it.
I love it. Absolutely.
Russell, just a question or two about it. I'm assuming that this isn't going to be using those horrendous forms that the state provides that are PDFs that don't work right?
No. It's kind of like a template format that you basically sign onto their system. You will follow some pre-fills, but this is from a separate company. It's not the state's forms.
Oh, those things were, they're easy to make mistakes, but let's put it that way.
You'll have an opportunity to review them before you submit them. We'll also, we're going to be undergoing some training in my office on how to utilize the system. We want to get pretty proficient at that, and then we'll be doing basically the training for.
I was just saying, make sure you invite us, will you?
Yeah, well, we want to get the training first, and then we want to make sure that we'll offer multiple opportunities for you to be trained.
And it covers all three reports?
I'm sorry?
It covers all three reports?
Yes, that's correct. All of the reports, all the statements that you would have to submit. The cost, if you're interested, is a one-time $500 fee, and then it's $330 every year thereafter.
So the reason I wanted this on this agenda, not only to tell you about it, is because we're piggybacking essentially onto the Supervisor of Elections contract, which is creating uniformity in Broward County. It's way under the administrator's limitation of $10,000, but we wanted it on there anyway so you understood the direction that everyone is basically being asked to go to, and the cost is minimal. Andy, there was one other procurement that was under your limit that we discussed, and I forgot which one it was that you just wanted to.
It was the AFG grant, which I covered during Administrator's Conference.
Okay, so we're done with it.
We're good.
All right. Need a motion?
No.
Formative thing?
Yep.
Okay.
The next item, which is the approval of minutes, we'll need a motion to approve the, or to add, first of all, the September 26th second budget hearing item.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
This is solely to add.
Any public comment in this matter? They've corrected our minutes before.
Councilmember Hartman?
So just for our clarification, the motion is to add and to accept the minutes.
Both sets.
Both. We're going to do it all at once.
Why are we doing this? What's different about this than all others?
These minutes were, the state is asking for these as part of our trim complaints package, and they're pretty much being unreasonable about timelines, so we had to turn these around pretty quickly, much sooner than we normally would.
I vote yes.
Okay.
Quickly, yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Quickly, yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Adjournment. Motion to adjourn.
Here, here.
You're good? Thank you all for coming out. Greatly appreciated.
Congratulations.